Welcome to the Sabine and Paul Board of Education meeting, April 2015. Thank you all. Susan, take your time.
Valerie Anderson.
Here.
Toni Cizini.
Here.
Alan Brown.
Here.
Gregory Pava.
Here.
Michelle Lorah.
She's here.
Emily Hibbert.
Yes.
James Firstfield.
Yes.
Kelly Lutz.
Jennifer Cody.
Here.
Michael Sinatra.
Here.
And Peter Tadde.
Thank you. So everyone's here except for that. Public comment on agenda items. Does anyone like to address the board on anything on the agenda? Alright, so you know it then, I'll move on to consent agenda. Is there anyone who wants to remove any item from the consent agenda? Alright, so you know, and the consent agenda is approved. Number four, mobile app design in CAD, the career technology education presentation. Sheila Gambino. Sheila, welcome.
Hi, everybody. Good evening, I just want to give a little intro, because you are going to hear from Sheila Gambino, and she's going to talk about a new high school course, mobile app design. I just have a student here with her, be exciting to hear about what we're doing at the high school. In addition, you're going to hear from Karen Carpenter, who is a new teacher here this year, and she's going to talk about an exciting project that students created using CAD. So I'm going to turn it over to Sheila.
Sorry, by the way, just for those who, anyone who may be unaware, CAD is computer-aided drafting.
Yes, that is correct. So we're very proud to present the mobile app design course to you tonight. It's a new class this year, and it's part of the Academy of Digital Arts and Sciences. We work as an independent entity, which means we present our own app instead of working with the science classes to develop an app for them. So the students have a lot of creative freedom, and they work with the Chicago learner outcomes, engaging in the creative process and solving problems. And one of our students isn't here, I've been hoping that he'll show up any minute, but I just want to say how proud I am of these two incredible students. They worked really hard, really since eighth grade in programming. And Sean Walsh, who's sitting right back here, he's, he's wanted to be in technology since he was in second grade, and he learned a little bit about HTML from his sister, but he was a little bit confused. So, you know, time went on, and in sixth grade, he learned a little bit of objective data, and his interest was deep again. And now he's in the mobile app design class, and he's decided that technology is really what he wants to do. This is, he's moving with it, he's going far with it, he wants to be a programmer. So without further ado, we also invite Sean. And here is Jared Martin, who I'm also extremely proud of, who decided that he wanted to be a programmer in eighth grade project, as he was learning about robotics and automation. And then he attended our summer enrichment program, where we did some mobile app design in the summer enrichment program. So he decided at that point in time that that's when he wanted to become a programmer. And he is also moving, steering his course with it.
So in our mobile app design course, our final goal is to build an app. Well, we have both an independent app and a team app. But the team app is for the expo. And right here is a picture of my, of my app and the team app, because my app was voted to be used in expo. And so what my app is, is it's a program that determines your location. And using that, it determines your speed. And if you're going over 20 miles per hour, the phone turns off notifications to hopefully prevent texting while driving. And right here is the code. And one thing we did is we put a limit on it, so if you're going over 120 miles per hour, it shuts off, because we would assume they're going on an airplane or a class or a train or something. And down here, we declare variables such as speed and like example, for example, X, Y, and Z are your altitude, your longitude, and your latitude. And these are very important in determining your speed. And right up here is a map equation to figure out the speed that the user is going. And also in the program, we detect at what, at what speed the user is going, and whether or not it should turn off notifications and prevent your phone from texting. So right here is the block of code that's used for, that's used to determine your speed. And we convert right here the speed that the calculator, that your tablets or your phone understands, and turn it into miles per hour, so that way we can understand it. And right here is the code that just turns off your phone. This is what we use to find the location. So basically, we created a function that every second, it gets your, it gets your location. So because it's finding your speed per second, and then we can convert that to miles per hour.
And then my personal app that I made for the class was Better Days, which I described as a calendar of wacky, crazy holidays that you can celebrate any day of the year. Not only does it display the holiday, but if you tap the image, it brings you to a link that tells you a little bit about the history of the holiday or why it's important. You also have an alarm screen, where you can set a specific date, and when that date rolls by, one will send you a notification saying, hey, your holiday's here. And then there's a social media screen, which you can use to either text a friend saying, hey, look, today's a chocolate-covered marshmallow day, or you can post it Facebook or tweet. And so this is the code for the home screen, which tells you what holiday it is. Some of the code holds values from a database, which I created, where it names the holidays for short, as well as changes the holidays you've displayed, not only what day it is, but also tomorrow maybe. This is the alarm screen. The way this works is you have four buttons towards the top, where you can select month, day, and year, and then set. When you hit set, that sets a little label under it to the date that you want the alarm to go off. And when that label and the label at the top of the screen, which is the current date, match, it sets off the alarm, which will play the sound and send you an notification. And then this is the social media screen. On the far left is the texting code. So you have a little text box, you can type in your message. You choose a contact, and you can hit send, and it'll send the message to your contact. You got the tweet button. So you type in your tweet, you're already logged in, you hit the button, and it posts the tweet to your Twitter. And then you also have, in the middle, the Facebook button, which when tapped creates your Facebook.
So what you just saw, the core list called MIT App Inventor. And MIT App Inventor was used to help kids to learn programming. And that only works on Android. And right here is the code for programming on iPhone. The program that we use is called Xcode. And this pro, this is what's used in, in the programming that we all know. What is it in text form instead of block form? And the piece that I want to focus on, which I believe is the most important part, is on the handout. And it And it may seem like another language and something that's not understandable, but if you take time to, to learn it and practice it, then it would be very simple. And from my experience, this became like another language to me. And basically, what this does is it declares a variable, just like in math, and it keeps on adding that variable. And in other words, what this does is it just counts the seconds that the app has been running. And just like in the app that I was showing before, it gets the longitude, and latitude, and altitude. And this is useful for determining speed. It's the same thing as before, but it's just in text form instead of block form.
And so while what we, we may be doing is basically complicated and complex, that's not what everyone's doing. Because we have an expo in about a month and a half, we have split the class into three separate teams. Sean and I are in the programming department. We have a graphic design department, who is in charge of creating logos and posters, and you know, we'll see how it develops. And we also have the marketing team, which is in charge of social media, the website, the blog, directing movies and documentaries to document our progress.
So what you see here is the programming we've been doing. We have a marketing team that, right here, is writing scripts for our advertising. We have a graphics team right here, and they're creating a logo for both our company and the app. And they're very important parts of, of the team also.
So really, the class is focused on a business model, where the students actually developed their own mobile app design business. And then they, they created roles, like they came up with all the roles that they would need to fill a company with mobile app design. And then they actually filled out resumes and recovered letters to apply for their positions. And we picked three managers who actually manage each ones of each team. So the team members report to the team leaders every Monday, and by Friday, they're required to hand in deliverables. We use the aging and the creative process, school-wide rubric, to be able to measure their progress. And I just want to add also, the graphic design team, they're learning skills like how to use Photoshop and Illustrator, and how to draw on a tablet, and you know, use devices that are used in the graphic designing world. And the marketing team is making a documentary about our class, and also they're making a commercial that's kind of like, you know, more of a fun, kind of creative commercial about their app to present a deck. So it's, you know, a lot of different areas focused on in this one class. So yeah, they helped out on these guys, they were really, really hard in class, and they pulled them up to keep the others. Can you tell us, does that code for you to look at? Because we, we wanted to show you, we have two programs on the, on the devices, and we wanted to show you, they're not completely functioning yet, because again, it's a work in progress. But we wanted to show you the apps, but give you the code, because sometimes people look at the app and they're like, oh, this is cute, or this is easy, but I would want to see, you to see like how much work really goes into this.
Question.
Alan?
Oh, I just, one question for you. Sean, how did you pick 20 miles an hour? Was that a
Well, I assume
For the, for the cutoff, is that, is that like a police thing, or just a momentum thing?
Well, I assume that people will be walking with their phone. And for example, I go on runs with my phone, and I use a Nike 3 run, so it tracks miles per hour in my speed.
So you wouldn't want a cutting off thing? And Jared, do you know what, what happens on your app on September 20, September 19?
Uh, not quite yet. It's still work in progress. I'm trying to build a larger database to kind of have full crumbs, and that way it doesn't just like one holiday, it will just like every day.
And Sheila, Xcode looks a lot like XML, is it, is it related?
No, it's not really like XML. It's really its own entity. It's its own animal.
Okay, similar way that Jared was defining. So it's not an easy transition, is it?
Not an easy transition. So did my opinion of one of the hardest languages.
Maybe they did that on purpose. Thank you guys.
So we're going to pass around the GPS location, just so you can see like what it would look like. And pass around the better data.
Alan?
Um, in your, your managerial approach, do you have a legal department? I mean, because I think you should be applying for copyrights and patents.
Absolutely.
Things like that. How can you do that? And I think you should.
I believe once Sean and I work further, once we have finished products that we feel are ready to go out to the market, we'll try to plug in ours.
Excellent. That in itself is going to be a great program.
Michael, a question, when you, when you two bid your first billion dollars, will you remember us talking?
No, we're still in the process.
Lots of royalties will have to be paid, licensing.
Sean?
Um, great job, you guys. It's amazing and fantastic. Since you're both into technology and are sophomores, I'm just wondering, have you looked ahead? What kind of classes? Do you feel that there are technology offerings, and, or is there something that you're looking for? Things we should be considering for the future, for adding in the future?
Well, the majority of me learning programming has been independently on my own, over the weekends or during break. So I would also be interested if there was an app that I could study.
Wait, next year, we are offering an introduction to computer programming. So, which will get students college-ready, going through that.
That's great. Is this considered entry level?
Um, this is, this is like pre-entry level.
Okay.
We want to step it up a little bit.
I mean, there's no money for any apps, is there?
Only the seller.
I should say, Sean came and said he was so excited. He said, look what I did over break! He created this calculator for the science class that solves like all of these crazy scientific equations. And he's using it for the science class.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much, Sean and Jared. Appreciate it very much. Sheila, thank you. Very exciting stuff.
So next up, our next speaker will be Karen Carpenter. And she is a technology teacher, mostly at the high school level. And she teaches some CAD classes, and also has a little thing to share with you about a new, another new class that we have, which is architecture.
Hello, everybody. I'm Karen Carpenter, and I am new to fog. I am new to teaching. For the last 29 years, I've been a mother of five, and running an architecture relationship. And I decided that after I got my kids off to college, it was time for me to give back and share my experience with the students. So I'm thrilled to be here and teaching the students here at fog, and teaching a lot of different courses and learning a lot at the same time. Kim had asked me to look at the design of the teacher's work area. And so I had the students go in there, and this is some pictures of what it looks like when they walked in. And they found that it hadn't been designed, organized, or really looked at for quite a few years. And I had them go through a design process that I would go through as an architect to redesign the space. And it starts off with interviewing the teachers who use the space. It has them looking at how the space is used just by watching. And then they had to create a program. And by creating a program, they had to take the information that they gathered from the teachers and administration, and look at the new products that are available today, and come up with a design that they thought would be an improvement. We started off doing an existing floor plan, they measured it up and showed what was there already.
Karen?
Yeah.
Maybe you could just show the others. What you showed.
This is the existing floor plan. We saw it, show that and then get it around. So they, one of the things that the teachers asked for was to be able to, during their lunch hour, to give exams to the students. But they wanted, there's not a lot of space in there, so they wanted to be able to have this room where they could watch the kids take exam, but they want it in quiet while it was their reading exam, and not have the people eating lunch disturb them. But they also wanted that room to double in case they needed to have a private conversation with a student or a parent later on. And they discovered a product called Smart Glass, which is used in hospitals and hotel rooms. And it, so it would be a glass wall around it. And then when they flipped a switch, it would go to being opaque, so that you couldn't see through it. So you can, and it's just a matter of gases in between the glass that would allow it to double up in whichever way. And they use it a lot in ORs, in case, so if there's a surgery going on, and they want the residences not to have germs in there, so they can turn it on and off. And it's also used in hotels. But so I thought that was creative research on their part. And they researched different furniture that would go into the use in there. They made a list of all the things that the teachers had said they wanted to have in there. And they came, I had, I, no, I must say, I had two different CAD classes working on this, so I had two different designs. I only brought one of them on today. But they came up with a whole new design, and I don't know if you guys have ever been in the teacher's work area, but there's the different departments, and so we were trying to make it, you know, not so closed, different departments having the ability to have it more open and bringing technology. So we thought if we could have a large area where they could all eat lunch together and have a big flat-screen TV, where they could do technology workshops, and have a chance to make their group more cohesive instead of smaller departments, if they wanted to, but they would also have the options of having their small departments through the new kinds of seating. And they also needed, so this is where they could have the lunch area all together. Also, just have a lounge where they could be, you know, more comfortable to sit there and watch, you know, the screen for the tech workshops. Or maybe we could just have announcements, either whose birthday it is, you know, with teachers, just to make it more of a community, set the community. And then this is the room where they have the smart glass, that they can turn the visibility of the, you know, the room open and close. And also, there've been complaints about the bathroom situation there. There are currently more female teachers in the school than males, and so they thought they should have more room in the female area in the bathroom. So they came up with the idea of switching the bathrooms. And also, there has been issues with the doors opening directly into the teacher's work area, which made it a little less desirable to eat right in front of the bathroom door. So they decided to put up a screen there, and then switch this bathroom door around to be open back. And also have a place for coats. And we also had them measure up all the books, like some of the departments have books scattered throughout the school, so they measured up all the books that were scattered throughout the school, and figured out a way to get all the books all in one area. So they lined all the walls and figured out the linear footage of books that they needed to be able to get all the books there in the same spot, and accomplish to have everything together, but have it in a more organized fashion. So this was just them going through and taking the information and learning the design process. I had some other students, one was working on, on the CAD, who's using, figuring out how to make an artificial heart. Some were doing guitars, some were doing race cars. So I had them drawing things that they were passionate about. And then one of the other classes I also taught this past semester was architecture, which is something near dear to my heart. I had the students first learn how to draw by hand, and then I had them go to doing it on the computers while using software which they had used here, which is what the industry uses, which is AutoCAD. I mean, by Autodesk. And I was able to get a three-year free subscription to that, so that they could all learn that. They learned how to draw the house that they had just drawn by hand on the computer, and then they went to designing their own house. So this was just quickly, one of the houses that one of the students had designed, and just brought it along to show you some of the work that they were doing in the architecture class as well. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, I would love to teach it. Megan?
Um, is it possible for your students to design the improvement in the mall? And then maybe we could start throwing some numbers together, so we could just determine ourselves?
I would love, I've also had them pressed for them to redo the library. And so I think personally, from where I'm coming from as an architect, I want them to work on something that has meaning to them. And so I think the mall would be great. I actually, one of the ideas we came up with was to take the planetarium and make it into a chipboard box, where you could have it a culinary and a business class, where they could be teaching and make it into a place to serve food there. I mean, I was having them brainstorm all different kinds of ideas, and then that money would go into making like a senior lounge. But we had so much fun looking at the mall, and just talking about different projects around the school, and how could we make things, improve them around here? Because things haven't been improved for a while. But yes, answer your question.
Welcome, Ms. Carpenter, welcome. I hear your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
And I love it. I think that is fantastic, just to go from that to even the concept of how they wrote things, how they wrote things out, you know, useful spaces. That's, I, I think that is, that's the best application of, from what you learn in the classroom to real-world.
Well, they want to do the project too, just to let you know.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Yes.
Well, that was, my question was going to be about the doing the project part. Just, do you feel that pricing it out and putting together a proposal fits with your class?
Most definitely.
Because I think they should propose, I think they should present it to us, and I think we should fund it. But And, and we just worked on the budget. But, but anyway, I think that would be a valuable, like sort of conclusion to that. And I think it would be really, obviously not everything that comes with work could be funded, but I think there, clearly that's an area that needs help, and we recognize that. And so I, I, that would be kind of a fun
Well, I was teaching the students, you know, the happy wife, happy life, you know, concept. I said, if your teachers are working cohesively, and, you know, pulling together, and that they, the trickle-down effect would affect them, and that this was really in their best interest. And they became very passionate about it. And Kim has actually asked me to put together budget prices on it, and I had every intention of doing it, just been a little busy with a few other things lately. But yes, that is on my to-do list, and I will do it personally. I also came up with my own design. But I would like to be able to do that in a future CAD class.
Two things, I would, one, I would suggest that if this is going to go anywhere, that you have a meeting with the director of facilities, because
He was the person to see it.
Okay, excellent, because, you know, he, he's the one that has to deal with it and maintain it. So that's good. The second thing is, are you going to give them any training? If, if we do a project like this, are they going to get any training in the contract administration piece, what it means to be an architect?
Well, you know, I take forty kids
Although they're not licensed, so they can't.
No. Well, I take forty kids to West Virginia to teach construction every summer. And so I'm used to, you know, teaching kids on the construction site. And I would, you know, certainly, I've been walking them through step-by-step, and I would love to take them through those different levels and give them the opportunity.
Excellent.
What, so you're teaching, what classes are you teaching? The CAD and the
I teach CAD, architecture, architectural framing, woodworking, photography in wood, and architectural framing, and graphic design.
Wow, so, so what, so you're in the wood shop as well?
Currently, I'm teaching, yeah, woodworking. They're making Civil War chairs and chairing in walnut boxes right now.
I want to take all your classes.
Come on down.
That's great, thank you.
Sheila had mentioned you discussing possibly
Sheila had mentioned you discussing possibly a new course. Did I miss that?
The architecture course, I'm, the CAD's new in the sense that I'm bringing in different software. The architecture, I mean, I'm teaching the architectural framing, which wasn't there before, and the graphic design is new as well.
Do you find that these courses have sufficient student interest?
Yeah, I, you know, I gear it towards where their interests are. Like, when I started off teaching the CAD, I wanted to know what they were, so I did a unit on career, technical careers, and so I found where each room, so I tied the CAD into where their interests were. And I used the different software for that particular, maybe it was more manufacturing, because I wanted it to be towards their interest. And I'm sure that interest will change from year to year as different students come through here, but, you know, even within construction, you know, whether I'm doing furniture making or, you know, construction management. Tomorrow I'm doing a career fair as the construction architect. There's just, it's such a wide range. I also have a degree in civil engineering, so I can, you know, go off into the engineering part of it, I can go into the architecture part of it, construction, there's so many different classes of construction to go into. And we're rebuilding our hall infrastructure in this country right now, so, and if we're not, we need to be. And so I think it's a wide range of possibilities for careers for these students to be interested in.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, I'm just, I'm just gasping with appreciation.
No, I have an eight grade who I think has signed up for something next year. Sorry about it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, that's great, thank you.
Very exciting stuff.
All right, moving on then, thank you. To report to the chair, the only thing I have to report is that pursuant to our, the board's discussion at our last meeting, which may have been executive session, I almost called, but pursuant to the authority given to me by the board, I have signed a memorandum of understanding between Region 12 Board of Ed and the Chappagh Valley Administrators Association, recognizing Lori Ferreira as being identified as an associate principal for as long as Lori Ferreira serves in this position. When Lori Ferreira no longer serves in this position and the position needs to be filled, it will be, it will revert to and be known as the assistant principal position, which is the position identified in the current contract. So Lori Ferreira, her official title now is associate principal to the Association of the. All right, that's all I can have. Superintendent, please.
Yes, I have a couple of things to share. First of all, board members, one of our Chappagh alum who we're going to put a spotlight on, daughter of Val, is the New York Times bestseller number one, the President's Inside the World with the Roadhouse. And I'm so glad. First book, I have it, I haven't read it yet, so just got it yesterday. But really excited, I think it's a wonderful, wonderful thing as a mom, and.
Can I just interrupt for a minute?
Yes.
Because we're in the process of cleaning out our stuff from the basement and everything, and I came across Kate's original senior project. You know, the great big board and the whole thing. And it was about working for the Waterbury Republican newspaper, developing stories, ideas, to features, to editing, to publication. And I thought, you know, this was, I mean, she's had other influences, but this was really key, to see your name in print, to know what it's like to be a journalist, to check your sources, to go on interviews with sources. And so I think it kind of started there too. See your project, congratulations.
Thank you.
And then we have our chairman here, who was named by the Litchfield County Bar Association as, receiving the Honorable Anthony V. Demeo Pro-Bono Award for his devotion to pro-bono work, so many.
Yeah, I'll just correct my reading, it was Connecticut, not the Litchfield.
Connecticut, Ethan Pickel. Okay, so yeah, congratulations, very nice.
I'm just going to put.
Yes, very nice. And then to continue, we have two field trips that already took place, but we just want to let you know that they were a little bit further than normal. Agri-science application, just so you know, we are still in it. Our two bills are in the construction bill area, school construction, which is a good place to be. I will call Art O'Neill tomorrow just to let him know, you know, that we're, let us know if we need to do anything and all of that kind of stuff. Went today, Kim Gallo, Charlie Boos, and two of his people from his office, and myself went to Region 14, so you got a handle on exactly what we're doing and getting, you know, a real picture in our head, so that was very, very exciting. We do have some drawings that the facilities committee saw tonight and will maybe share at the next meeting. And we're going to share them, they are just draft drawings with our Agro Show, which is a Mrs. Gallo calls it, just easy, rolls off the tongue there. But we're going to Roxbury on Thursday evening, 7:30. We're going to Bridgewater on May 11th, and Washington is still choosing a date. And so we're going to start to talk about the science labs, the Agri-science program, et cetera. So it's, a lot of things are going on, very exciting. The other thing with the board calendar, I had Debbie just give you an update that I rarely, you know, it's really the July and August dates, I had already given you dates in June, and I changed July 13th to July 20th. And then we have, we had the 17th and the 31st already scheduled, 17th as a retreat, which I think would be a good thing, especially if we have some new board members. And then it's the 31st, I had made a mistake with the email, I wrote the 20th. So I think this is really important, we will not, we'll definitely have the 20th meeting. And the other meetings will play right here, but I wanted everybody to really make sure that you put that time in, because if we're going to have a vote on September 15th, we're going to need to do some work in the summer. And we're still working on that calendar, so I don't really have an exact calendar of all the dates, et cetera, but I did want you to have that. And I think that is it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. I just want to say with regard to our application pending report of legislation, I'm glad that it's not in the Judiciary Committee, since one legislature would not, legislator would not appropriately apologize to the other, the whole thing, everything before the Judiciary Committee is done. So it's amazing. Yeah, all the bills, the whole session, yeah.
Okay, well.
Okay, so that's not us, good. All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Michael.
Just speaking of honors, Pat, I was wondering if you could let us know a little bit about the honor that you just received. It was a three or four-year term, I think?
Yes, three-year term. This is my third time I ran, I lost the first two times, so perseverance counts.
What is this?
This is the AASA Governing Board. So AASA is the American Association of Superintendents, and represents the 50 states and different areas, Canada and Puerto Rico, et cetera, et cetera. And.
Conventions in Puerto Rico?
Excuse me?
Conventions in Puerto Rico?
No, it's not.
It's the winter, maybe?
No, so anyway.
We're in Dakota.
So each state has a certain amount of, and it was weird, because some states have one, some states have two, three, I don't know how that works, because it didn't really look at our population. But we have three seats in Connecticut, and I won. I ran on girl power and being a good role model for youth. And the third time was a charm. So I'm very excited, I have to, in July, go to Washington for three days, which they pay for. And you meet with the group, you meet with the legislatures, I guess we, I don't really know exactly everything we do, but it's really, you know, each organization has a different vision and mission, what you're going to work on, so I'm assuming it's a lot of that. And then you have to go to the February conference, which I usually go to anyway, and then you do some voting and different things. So I think it's great, I think it's wonderful. One of my goals is to get Region 12 on the map, let everybody know across, you know, the country, how wonderful we are, starting with the area, and we're working our way. So I'm excited about it, I think it'll be a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mike. I meant, I intended to mention it during my report to the chair, I forgot, so thank you for bringing that up, very exciting for Pat and for us. All right, item seven, consider it appropriate to approve ed specs for science labs. Mr. Carter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve the ed specs as presented, I believe they've presented everyone of their materials, and the receiving, the facilities committee has reviewed these, discussed them, and voted unanimously to present them to the board with our recommendation for approval.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's a movement, second, is there any discussion? Michelle?
I have a couple of questions as I was reading through them. I'm assuming that the science department and the faculty was consulted on making sure that the specs meet all of their requirements?
Yes, yes.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I think there were, there were bits of design changes to the plan based on, if I'm not mistaken, based on the faculty's desire to move a different configuration of the way the lab stations are configured. And I know that was critical to them, and it's funny, because I was on that tech floor of Chappagh, and we had that discussion with one of the science teachers, so it was a good thing, so, yeah.
Great, thanks. My only other question was, as I was reading through, I don't know exactly how this all works, or the timing of these ed specs, but I saw the enrollment data, and I remember in the facilities committee, last month, I think it was, we were looking at the number of labs required, we were sort of, we sort of had the agri-science program in the back of our head, but that hasn't been approved, but then we'll hear about that in June. So will those members then get tacked in here, since they're going to referendum at the same time?
We had that discussion tonight, actually, and we're, we can't do it yet, of course, but should the timing work out, then those population numbers would also be approved, yes, that would be the idea.
Okay.
But this is pretty much, a lot of things in here seem very bureaucratic and pedantic and whatnot, but it's the kind of stuff that has to be in the ed specs when they go to the state for a project reimbursement. There's a lot of things in here that are, that they're, they're critical for the state to see in order to make sure that the supply of the project and things are forward on. So a good thought for us, it seems like, why this level of detail, you're speaking to heart.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Yeah, that was my question too, as far as the capacity, and I know I sat in on one of your meetings, you know, which, frankly, I sat in to learn more about this. And I'm just seeing, at least as far as here, how the projected enrollment looks. Do we have a projected enrollment with the new agri-science influx? Because this isn't, this is just as it stands now, I believe?
Yeah, this is as it stands now without the agri-science. If you.
Right.
I hit the way they laid it out when they did their initial discussion of the agri-science for the application. I think what you would do is you would take these numbers from 2018, 19, school year on, and just add 50 or 60 students a year to that total number, and that's where you'll get, so after four years, you'll be, you'll add 60 the first year, you'll add 120 the second year, 180 the third year, and then 260 the last year.
Right.
And I think those are conservative numbers. I mean, the expectation is that you may be able to generate more seats. This is fewer than non-awards currently turning away, and we figure that the air on the side of conservatism on those numbers, but we may actually generate more people than non-awards currently turning away, once we have a program, and once they realize, for a lot of them in the western part of the state, it's closer than if they had to go to all the way to non-award, you know, say, Hamburg.
So we could, we would maybe project perhaps in 10 years, have a population around 500 maybe, or close to that, which seems.
At the high school, yeah.
No, no, all total, six to 12, everyone using the labs. Because if we're projecting about 250, it looks like, a little under 250, I'm kind of rounding out.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm looking at the wrong column.
If you look at appendix E, and you look at the bottom at 24, 25, I'm just looking.
Right, in the middle of high school, in the, the Chappagh Valley School, yeah.
Right.
It's about 500.
So if you add another, it'd be about 500. The one thing I just want to check out, because we want to make sure that, I know we had these great sheets that showed how the curriculum worked in terms of what labs were necessary to be able to effectively teach and expand it, or even a nice full science curriculum. And I want to, I want you to expound upon that a little bit, because was it just a matter of planning for the members of the curriculum? Was there any resource in terms of what national or state standards are as far as the number of labs you need for population?
Well, as a matter of fact, there were two basic components to it. One of them was the numbers of students and the numbers of classes they're taking in. The second component was a desire to advance the curriculum. As we become the Chappagh Valley Agri-science STEM Academy, Agri-science STEM Academy, we proceed to that. One of the things that we really like to see is, we really like to see a much better, much more rigorous STEM program here at the school. We'd like to see more science classes offered. And as a result, we were, some thought was given to, if that were the case, would this number of labs work, and that was part of it. And so I think that you had several pieces to, to both, and also, you know, when you think about it, one of the issues that we're confronting is, we were having it designed in 1969 and 1970, and science is a different place than, a different place than it was back then. So we're trying to have some future expansions, an increase in the program, the expectation that as we add new areas of study, that they're going to require labs, and also, how many labs do we need for what we're teaching there? And if we project a population increase on it from the agri-science academy, what population do we need? Came out of the Chappagh Lab, that seemed to be the consensus.
Because that's what I think is essential from the outset, if we approve this, we have to make sure that we, we're all engaged together and that we engage our public relations and forces to make it very clear how this is a real advantageous, not just advantageous, but necessary expense for the region. Because we don't want, you know, there's so much talk about this building was built for a population over twice the size of even the 500 were expected. So we don't want anyone to misconstrue the calculations and these ed specs, so that they will say, well, if four of them were good enough for a population of 1,200, why do we need five for 500? We want to make sure that those answers are answered immediately at the outset, so that they're not in any way allowed to bubble and filter through a community, so we can actually have support for what may look like, you know, a big outlay, but one that is justified.
That's a good point.
That was part of the meat and potatoes of the presentation at our last meeting, when the administration looked over, right, the curriculum, what the rigors of that curriculum required, what hit home was, they're putting forward, and I believe it's our associate principal.
Right.
Who was talking about the need for a lot of flexibility in the scheduling. Applying flexibility in the scheduling allows for more classes to be offered, and that is a piece that we've already talked to the facilities committee, how very important it is. I hear your point, and I agree, it's not lost. It not only has to do with population, but it is what is expected from the curriculum, it is the flexibility of the scheduling to allow for more classes to go on, and for that quality of the rest of the education piece to be, to be in place. And I think that was, that was a very strong point that we'll keep putting out there.
I just want to say, the educational specifications, if, when you get a chance, if you want to look at the last page, it really is a formality for the state. This is not something that, you know, goes out to the public, certainly if somebody wants it, they can see it. But it really is to get approved by the board, so that this way, it can go to the architect, and the architect can price out what we need based on the ed specs, and then figure out what the reimbursement rate is, so that when we are ready to go to referendum and start these meetings, we'll have the correct information, and then we'll have everything you talked about, because we're at 100% agreement. But that's not what this is. This is just really, what do you need?
It's a formality for state funding.
Yes.
State.
For the architect to get this, get started.
Michael?
Just to follow up on what Alan was saying about thinking about communication and how we can communicate this need to the public at large, I'm wondering if timing-wise, the NEAS report will be helpful to us. In other words, I'm assuming that this is going to be a red. In other words, I'm assuming that this is gonna be a red flag for NEAS.
Absolutely.
That they're gonna identify? And I'm thinking that actually in many ways, that will help us identify the need.
We'll, we'll definitely have it, I would think, by the summer, I would think so. Don't you think?
I would, I would hope so, yeah.
Yes.
That's not my control.
Right.
But this day we should be anticipating.
Right, and that would be great to be able to put a couple of quotes from NEAS in there that, you know, really pinpoint the science.
Because that's subjective.
Yes, and the other thing that when we do our little road show, I'm sorry, we're gonna take pictures, different pictures of our current science lab so that they can see exactly the condition.
Anyone else? All right, there's a motion on the table then to approve the ed specs for the science labs which have been presented to us in our materials. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Need post. Anything? I have a passage in the minutes, thank you. I've checked with the superintendent, there's no need for executive session, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I'd like that, I'd like to report something to the superintendent. I recently had occasion under some very prime circumstances, I had to acquire some additional technology in my practice that entirely blew up, hardware went, it flew, the whole thing went nuts and I desperately needed assistance under the gun on the night before I was leaving for a conference in Arizona. And I'm pleased to report that when I got everything solved in beautiful fashion, the person who assisted me was a Chappagh researcher.
All right, that's great.
Absolutely outstanding job.
Nice.
All right, is there any motion to adjourn? All those in favors? Thank you all. Enjoy your evening.